Well, with that then, welcome to tonight's Coho City School District Board of Education meeting for May 20th. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:01. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And Erin, if you could put up the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Could we get a roll call, please?
I keep doing, I was muted. Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Pascal?
I'm home.
Mrs. Annaly?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey? And Mr. Nolan?
Here. As a reminder, please send any comments for discussion to BOEcomment@Cohoes.org, and we'll go through those comments in the designated periods in the meeting. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Spring to provide our budget update.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to welcome our Board of Education members and also all of our participants tonight who are joining us by WebEx. We thank you for spending time with us this evening. Thank you. A few points of good news that I would like to share. Coho Strong. So Jeff Huno, our Athletic Director, has T-shirts that say Coho Strong that he, I'm not sure if you've seen any of the emails, but so far they've raised over $700. They are donating the funds to our local food pantries. And you have a few more days if you are still interested in participating in that. So that's really great. We have senior signs. We've had a lot of them. And our latest senior signs are being orchestrated by math teacher Heather Bra and math teacher Gabrielle White, who ordered them with the help from donations from other staff members at the high school. And they are actually placing them on students' lawns. That's what they were doing today. And staff members from the high school will be visiting their houses and they will be signing them. And we're going to publicize it district-wide. So really, anyone can sign, you know, can sign signs. So I'll definitely be signing my neighbors', Karen McDonald. I'll be signing his across the street. So, and any other ones that I happen to walk past. So I think that's pretty fun, pretty exciting. So we are ready for tonight's presentation, Erin. So that picture, first, let's just, let's take a good look at that picture. So that was from the Harmony Hill Trunk Show or Trunk Parade. And you can see our students, our families, and lots of smiling faces. And that was, that was really great, really great to see. So, so thank you, Harmony Hill. Big shout out to you tonight. Go ahead. Again, questions, submissions for public comment? Please email to us, BoardofEdComment@Cohoes.org. All right, so the executive orders really haven't changed since our last meeting. As everyone knows, New York State schools are closed for the remainder of the school year. The school budget vote and board member elections are held on June 9th. Absentee ballot. And we still haven't heard about summer school, the manner in which it will be conducted. We imagine that ESY, that's for our special education students, and any summer school will be in a virtual format, but that has not been communicated to us at this time. New York State Education Department is in the process of establishing a reopening task force. And this will be hosted by the Board of Regents, by our district superintendents in all the BOCs statewide, as well as the New York State Department of Health. So these meetings will be virtual. They begin, they will begin the first week of June. And they will be open to anyone who would like to participate, ask questions, and just listen through WebEx. So, so more information will be forthcoming on their task force. The Commissioner, Shannon Tahoe, is working with the Department of Health to release guidance on graduation ceremonies. We all want to honor our graduates, our seniors. We're so proud of them. They have been so important to us for many of them, of them for at least 13, 14 years. So we have to carefully balance that with what's safe and what's helpful and what meets the local orders. So, so that is going to be forthcoming. So I will definitely update our high school staff and we will talk about it, but, but we think we have a good plan going forward. Next slide, please. So our school budget vote, just to give you an update, on May 11th, that was the deadline for candidates to submit a petition to appear on the ballot. So I'm happy to say we have two board candidates for two board seats. Annaly. Our postcard notice was already sent. I received mine on Monday, so I don't know when everyone else received the postcard, but, but it's, it's in-house, so that's good. And absentee ballots are being organized, imprinted, and being sent through our BOCs to all registered voters in Coho's by May 27th. So we've submitted all of our information. Our budget newsletter is being finalized as we speak, and we will be sending that to the printer and mailing it out. Oh, my, I'm wearing earbuds, I'm sorry, hold on, it fell out. I'm sorry, I thought I'd try something new. Okay, can you hear me? Yes? Okay. All right. So, and then the second public notice is required to be sent out by June 8th. We're on track for that. We've already sent out the first one, as you know. Ballots must be received by June 9th at 5 o'clock, and the ballots will be counted on June 10th. So tonight, on the, on the agenda, you will see some of our election inspectors who will be counting the votes. Our property tax report card is due to the State Education Department by this Friday, so hopefully we will approve that this evening. And our budget hearing, as you know, is scheduled for next Wednesday, May 27th. Next slide, please. So as Albany County prepares for its plan to reopen, we're in Phase 1, as everybody knows, as of today, we are also, as you know, planning our reopening. Our reopening, we're waiting still, obviously, for, for guidance on this from CDC, from our local Department of Health, as well as the New York State Education Department and the Governor. And it depends on risk. So we are looking at three scenarios. One scenario would be fully open. Everybody is in face-to-face instruction, and you can turn it right, so you can stay right there. And that would be a low level of risk. That's good, right there. And if the risk is moderate, what will that look like? So that could be a blended model of face-to-face instruction, as well as virtual learning. And then highest risk is where we are right now, and that would be a complete closure, and that would be everybody in a virtual learning environment. So to start our plan, we are going to be establishing a district-wide committee made up of stakeholders, so I will be looking for a Board of Ed member. Our administrators will be on it, our directors, including athletics, facilities, technology, special education, our safety specialists through BOCs, our school medical director, Dr. Deterzy, an elementary nurse and a secondary nurse. And I'd also like to invite a parent and a student. We are also establishing building-level committees and also areas, special area committees. And they're already meeting, and they're considering again, how are we going to address student learning gaps? They're talking about it. But we will have an orchestrated district-wide coherent plan to identify, monitor, and address our student learning gaps when we return. And so we're ready for that. Social distancing, that will be part of our life moving forward until we're on the other side of this pandemic. And also being able to screen and monitor and obviously contain the spread of the virus. So assessing wellness of each student and each staff member entering our buildings will be a part of that, so we can ensure their safety of everybody. Supplies and equipment and maintaining cleanliness, those are things we're also discussing. And activities and events, what will that look like? I know at Vanskyke, they're already talking about parent-teacher conferences, and they're already planning for those to be conducted virtually. And addressing mental health of our students and staff. So each building will come up with a plan and how they're going to be addressing student mental health, and then district-wide, we will be looking at how we're going to support our staff members. Next slide, please. So the magnitude of the financial impact to school districts remains uncertain. There's really no change here. The New York State Department of Budget has said, without federal stimulus monies, $8.2 billion will be cut in aid to localities, and that does include school districts. So that is not new information. But the, the federal stimulus monies are from the HEROES Act. That is the Health and Economic Recovery Omnibus Emergency Solutions Act. That's $3 trillion nationwide. It's passed the House, it's currently pending in the Senate. And so we are waiting to see how much New York State will be awarded. The measurement period, so luckily, we've already survived our first measurement period, and at this time, there has been no takeback. So we will see what happens moving forward. Next slide, please. The magnitude of financial impact to Coho's. So as you may recall, a few months ago, pre-COVID-19, the district anticipated a 3% increase in aid, which is approximately $500,000. So unfortunately, that did not happen in the enacted state budget. School districts, the foundation aid was flat, and so 0% increase from the current school year. The Governor has advised again that a takeback could potentially be up to 10%. And for Coho's, this means a $1.67 million reduction in state aid. Next slide, please. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Stacy Mackey.
Good evening, this is Stacy Mackey. The proposed budget for 2021, the amount has remained the same since our April 22nd meeting. It is flat at $43.8 million. And our goal is really to preserve the quality of education first and as best we can under these difficult circumstances. Next slide, please. So this chart represents a five-year history of our budget growth. Key takeaways fiscal year 17, 18, we're under 1%. And in the current proposed budget, it's 0%. So over the five years, our trend is 1.72%, which is a very reasonable growth over the five-year history. Next slide, please. This is a new chart. This is required as part of the budget hearing, which will happen on May 27th. So it's required for us to provide plain language for the three-part budget. So program costs are roughly 72% of the overall budget. Program costs include the salaries and benefits of our teaching staff and our pupil services, that's our health, guidance, and library, et cetera. It also includes our instructional materials, our textbooks, extracurricular activities, athletics, BOCs programs, and our transportation costs. Capital is nearly 17% of our total budget, and this represents the salaries and benefits of our maintenance and our custodial staff. It also represents debt service obligations, principal payments on bonds, our utility expenditures, as well as insurance and tax sorcery or other court-ordered costs. Administrative costs are just over 11%. This includes salaries and benefits of our administrators and our clerical staff, curriculum development and staff development costs, tax collection, legal and auditing costs, any centralized printing or data processing, the BOCs administrative costs, and any research planning and evaluation through curriculum development. Next slide, please. So the expense summary again has not changed. Again, the key takeaways here, instruction and employee benefits, nearly 80% of the total budget. You'll see in employee benefits, the $279,000 in growth is really attributed to retirement costs, TRS and ERS costs, as well as health insurance premiums increasing. The operations and maintenance, you'll see a decrease year over the year there. You may recall that in the current year, the 1920 budget, we had a capital outlay of 100,000 for an elevator at the high school. And we also, we had someone give notice this year for HR through BOCs services, and that was not renewed, so that's also represented under that line item. Just a reminder, under transportation, the CDTA contract has been eliminated from the 2021 budget. Next slide, please. Revenues, key takeaway is state aid. State and building aid represent 55% of our overall budget. Again, uncertain for the 2021 school year, there is the three look-back periods, so there is an opportunity for mid-year reductions. Property taxes, 2.32% increase, that would be $363,000 in new revenue for the district. Payments in lieu of taxes, there is a modest increase there, $152,000. That's for two new pilot agreements, and that is provided through a schedule that we received from the city. Key takeaway here, interfund revenues, $785,000. That is our ERS and our TRS reserves, and we've talked about this for several meetings now. We will be exhausting those two reserves with the proposed budget. Fund balance, nearly $117,000 in appropriated use. Ideally, the dollar amount would be zero, but we did get it down to 0% of overall budget. Next slide, please. So the tax levy is $16 million. It is a 2.32% increase. And again, it would allow for $363,000 in new revenue for the district. This is a requirement. It's reported to the Office of the State Controller March 1st on an annual basis. Next slide, please. So this is a snapshot of historical data for the tax cap calculation and estimation of our tax rate. The city assessment role isn't due to be finalized until July 1st, so this is based off an estimate, and it is likely going to change. But the estimated tax rate is 37.8. An impact on the average homeowner with $150,000 assessed value would be about $60 annually, or $5 a month before any exception. Next slide, please. Contingency budget, so this is another slide that has been added, and this will be included in the budget hearing on the 27th. So with the tight timeline for budget votes and the votes happening via ballot, absentee ballot, the district, if the budget is defeated, the district would adopt a contingency budget, like we at the June 17th meeting. So what is allowable under a contingent budget? It's any legal expenditures that are required and any, anything authorized by statute or mandates. And then necessary items to maintain our educational programs and preserve our property health and safety as well. So we would require an additional nearly $400,000 in reductions under a contingent budget. There is about $17,000 in field trips. These are curriculum-based field trips, so to Vanskyke Pond and guidance-related field trips, so they would be eliminated. District-wide materials and supplies. So this is uniforms for our buildings and grounds staff. It is our phys ed materials and supplies, art, music, science, all general supplies district-wide. So that would be the biggest, the biggest reduction. It would also be a reduction in district-wide equipment, and again, buildings and grounds, and music would be the biggest contributors there. And then district-wide conferences.
I wanted just to make, wait, wait, let's just stay here for one second. I just wanted to really underscore how important it is that our, that our, our budget passes for, for many reasons. But if, for example, we aren't able to have extra funds to spend on materials and supplies for making sure that our buildings are at a high level of cleanliness and that we have everything we need to be able to ensure safety under COVID, it's important because it would limit our ability to be able to have monies available for that. And also Chromebooks, so district-wide equipment. It's, we know this is a virtual world right now, and it's really important that we have the ability to be able to purchase additional Chromebooks. And conferences, we will need to send some of our staff members to training to be able to, again, teach virtually or teach blended, or, you know, what are the standards of cleanliness and how can we train our cleaning staff? So I just wanted to add that it is really important to help ensuring safety for, for everybody in the next school year. And that's why it's really important that our, another reason it's very important our budget is, is passed. Next slide, please. So again, the budget features, as you all know, we've, hasn't changed. The growth is capped at 0%. The proposed tax levy increase is 2.32%. This budget does exhaust our ERS, our employee retirement system and teachers' retirement system reserves are exhausted. We do, we have a 1% of total revenue for our fund balance use. And reductions and efficiencies included in the budget proposal do amount to $1.6 million. Next slide, please. So what are those budget efficiencies and reductions? We've eliminated our CDTA contract services. We've also terminated our lease agreement with Holy Trinity for our care alternative program. We've restructured Northern Rivers to maintain two clinicians' fee-for-service model. So we will have one clinician at the middle school. We are moving one to the high school, so we do believe that will help with mental health needs of students at the high school. We have eliminated a number of software programs, SNN for communications, Huddle for Sports, Schoolzilla, and Passport for Good. We've reduced our BOCs services and grant writing and arts in education and in Capit, a three-day, to a three-day model for the high school. And our nursing services will transition to an in-house model at Vanskyke. We've eliminated the following positions. An administrator, 10.9 teachers. So if you recall, we get .9 because a .5 reduction in a library media specialist, as well as a restructuring in our world languages department, which realized a .4 savings there. And let's see, three teacher assistants, two aides, one high school secretary, one security guard, and 1.5 parent liaisons. And just to refresh everybody's memory, who's on the call, these, these were grant-funded positions, and they were not added to the general fund budget in this current school year. We've reduced summer hours for certain staff members, building subs, equipment and furniture, materials and supplies, field trips, athletic uniforms, curriculum writing, and clubs and high school intramuros. Next slide, please. So our timeline, tonight is May 20th, and we're hoping to approve our budget and submit our property tax report card to the State Education Department. Our budget hearing is next week, May 27th. Our budget notice will be mailed to residents on June 3rd, and then our budget vote is June 9th, the vote and the board elections. Next slide, please. So at this time, we will take questions.
Questions from board members first? To start?
I don't have a question as much as I wanted to make a statement, but I just wanted to see if any question content before I... Ready to go? So we've been asked a couple of times for the board members to share their position for it, even though we act as a body. I think in the interest of transparency, it's, it's important that everybody understand how we got to the vote that we're about to make. And I just wanted to share how I got there. So I just wrote a few things down, so I wouldn't forget anything important. I will be voting in favor of the 2.32 tax levy increase that's in front of the board for approval tonight. The funds generated by this increase will help us to provide supports necessary for our students while being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. This is not the budget that we set out to adopt. Like everyone else here, heartbroken about the cuts that we had to make, because these aren't numbers on a spreadsheet. These are people who love our kids and our community, and these are services that our kids and families are in dire need of. Throughout the development of this budget, my role was to advocate for a responsible spending plan that favors the students. And as a representative of this community, I've brought forward all of the concerns and requests that were shared with me during the process. I think I've advocated passionately for all available funding to be appropriated to student-facing programs and services. And there are individual lines in this budget that I don't agree with. The state regulations and our current school board policies grant the superintendent the authority to make transfers and allocate funds in different ways, and she's chosen to exercise that authority. I do, however, stand with the members of this board, and we need to move forward together to further our mission to prepare our students for success in tomorrow's world, which looks so much different than we ever thought it would.
Thank you, Nadia. It's Helen. I wrote a statement too, that I was wondering if I could read?
Of course.
So I just, I did write it out because I wanted to make sure that I clearly conveyed my thoughts. As some of you may know, my term on the Coho's Board of Education is ending, and next month will be my final month. After three years on the board, tonight's vote will be my hardest by far. I will be voting yes on the 2.32% tax levy increase. Nothing about the decisions made leading up to tonight have been easy, and adding the stress of a global pandemic and only being able to speculate on how our community will emerge from our current situation makes it even more difficult. I love these schools, I love these students, I love our staff, and I love this city. I am aware that these cuts that we have made have affected people's lives in truly significant ways, and I am deeply saddened by that. My role on the school board is to do what I think is best to help support the kids in Coho's, based on the feedback I received from my community. There are some areas of this budget that I think are the right call, and there are some that I oppose. However, the time has come, and all of us on the board have made compromises. I am leaving my position in good standing with my fellow board members and knowing that their goals are to do what is best for the Coho City Schools. Thank you.
This is Margaret. I also have a statement that I wanted to read. Again, I want to make sure that all of my points are clear, and so I'm just going to read what I prepared. My position has been steadfast in the respect that I understand the dollar amount of the budget and the reasons for the reductions to close the gap, which will allow a 0% increase in the total overall budgeted amount from 2019 to 20. I do not agree with the way that the cuts were proposed by the superintendent to get that figure. Every budget approved by the Board of Education is a framework that the leadership at both the building and district level need to monitor. need to monitor and maintain constant focus on to keep the district solvent. It is a trust that is built that those we charge with our resources do so in a way that is fiscally and educationally responsible for our students, our programming, and our community. This framework that was proposed does not come with a choice, but has been dictated what budgetary impacts will be and where. As the elected representation and voice for our community, we, as board members, have an obligation to review proposals, weigh the options, and make decisions. Some decisions are hard, but they come at the cost of determining what's convenient versus what is essential for our kids and our schools. This budget came with no decisions to be made or options to weigh other than a list of staffing program cuts that narrowed the budget, narrowed the budget to meet our deficit. To be concerned that there was no options for discussions by a board of education for programming other than those that have been recommended is nothing short of unacceptable, in my opinion. The board has not considered exceeding the gap to burden our, further burden our taxpayers, nor will it fund these reductions. In this next school year, we need to stop the hemorrhaging of money that we seem to be overspending. A significant increase in budget transfers within the current school year to cover overages makes it very clear to see that we are not working within a framework. To do so, we need to look forward to a future plan to implement more strict controls to regulate actual expenditures within the 2021 school year. I would ask that the superintendent present a budget and a plan, or present such a plan to the board in collaboration with our business manager, financial advisors, and legal counsel by July 1st to avoid further reductions in these vital areas. I also request that after such a plan is presented to the board, that the budget and policy committees convene to discuss oversight by the board. The loss of supports, staff, and programming, which directly impacts students, is the most disheartening outcome of this process. I believe there are other areas that we could focus on in possible reductions that were conveniences. But after months of discussion, we've been provided the same reductions. So with that, I acknowledge that the 2.3% levy increase is fair. And the budget total and allocated operational amounts will allow us to continue to provide a quality education to our students. And that is what I will take action on tonight. To be clear, any loss in revenue, be it state aid or failure of a budget to pass, will put us in a compromising position to further reduce much-needed programs for our students. As a community, we shine in the face of adversity and crisis, showing unity at this time to support our children's education, our teachers who provide that education, and our administrators who lead the charge as paramount. We're all in this together. We're one Cohoes.
Thank you, Margaret. Other comments from board members?
Yes, I would, I would just like to say I, I concur with many of the comments made by my fellow board members. And obviously, to state the obvious, this is, this is a very painful situation. As, as a school board, our, our role is policy and to some extent, procedures and process. We, this, this board is not shy about our opinions. And I think the opinions are heartfelt. And there's no one on this board I've ever heard say anything was not in support of our students. There's seven of us. We see things differently. We may have different priorities. And our, our board meetings reflect that. I think that's, that's a good thing. We have healthy dialogue. We have healthy arguments at times. And I, I think the end result is good with respect to putting together this budget. We, we've asked for a process. There's no such thing as a perfect process, and this probably wasn't perfect as well. But I think it was, it was, it was a thoughtful process. We asked our management team to come together and reflect on their, their priorities from, from the buildings. And that was done, and a budget is presented to us. I, I think people from every end, from, I know there's school board members that have gone through this budget piece by piece and blood, sweat, and tears. But our managers did, did the same as well. I think everyone approached this with our students in mind, and we are not going to agree on every piece of the budget. But that's not, that's not the point. The point is to do the best we can. And I, I think, I think that has, that has been done. I would like to thank our superintendent, our business manager, our entire, our entire team for putting this budget together. This is, this had to be as difficult, challenging, as painful as can be. At the same time, we recognize the pressure on the taxpayers. There are schools, we've got a neighboring school that's going to raise their taxes 19%. We're, we're holding on to the cap. We're not going above the cap. We're being respectful to the taxpayers, and I think as best we can to our students. And I appreciate all that's, all that's going into this.
Thank you, Mark.
I guess I'll go next. This was a difficult budget process. Nothing that we cut was simple, straightforward, nor easy. Nor is it a reflection that the things that we cut weren't doing good. It's the unfortunate balance of the amount of money that we have to work with and how to best attempt to allocate those resources. And to be clear, in the big picture, we're still need to make more cuts. We still need to watch every penny. We're still using a little shy of a million in reserves and fund balance for this year's budget, which will dry up, and we will have a very difficult year again next year. So I will be voting to approve this budget tonight and this levy amount. But I believe that we need to continue every week for quite a while to continue looking for opportunities for additional savings and additional ways to shore up our long-term budget process.
Thank you, Rick.
This is Sue. I would also like to speak. Mine is, I'm in support of, of the budget. I'm in support of all of the board members that have spoken. There's not much more I can say. We're all worried about our kids. And today, more came out. We have more to worry about. So I'm asking people to vote for our kids to pass this budget because contingency will only be worse. And we don't want to see our kids suffer anymore. So I'm asking that the community vote for this budget. Thank you.
Unrelated to the budget, but also on the agenda, I wanted to acknowledge a donation from Gen Youth for $2,000 for school nutrition. So I'm thankful to them. I'm also thankful for, I guess thankful in a way, but for Helen Tarlo and her service at the district as she puts in for retirement on the agenda as well. With that, I do have comments from the general public that I would like to go through as well, as it pertains to the agenda and the budget. There are a handful that I'd like to read. I have quite a few questions here from community member Dave Belaski. And he says that the budget, as I understand it, can be summarized as follows. One, increases the tax levy by approximately $300,000. Two, reduces all reserves to almost nothing. Three, reduces positions by approximately 20 through retirement inefficiencies or provide salary increases to teachers and other unions of approximately $785,000. So just to start with those four points, I believe they're mostly accurate, although we do have, I would, some additional reserves as well. Stacy, can you comment on the state of our reserves after this budget?
Yeah, so we haven't depleted all of our reserves. We've depleted the ERS and TRS reserves. But we do have debt service reserves, about 1.9 million. We do have a workers' comp reserve, which will have a balance of 178,000 or so. We do have an unemployment reserve of 42,000. We do have a tax statutory reserve, which is all pending cases. So it's all accounted for, 336,000. These are estimated balances at the end of the year. We do have an EVLR reserve, which would pay for our retirement incentives that are in our contract based off sick leave, 555,000. And we do have an appropriated fund balance, roughly 1.3 million.
Dave went on to say that this budget, as presented, puts the taxpayers of the city in a very, very difficult position, in his opinion. If we vote for the budget, we're agreeing to put more money in taxes, which is going straight into the pockets of teachers and other unions, many of which do not live in the district and pay taxes. Again, this is as Dave wrote it. If we vote down the budget, the district will have to cut additional monies, most of which will directly affect our students. But the teachers and other unions will still get their $785,000 worth of raises. Every year, we, as taxpayers, hold our nose and vote for the budget, believing our taxes are going to the students' educations. In reality, every year, our increases go straight into the pockets of teachers and unions. We do not question that teachers and other unions have a difficult job. They do. But in the current economy, where millions of people are losing their jobs or being asked to take pay cuts, why shouldn't it be expected that teachers and other unions do the same? I do not believe the school board has done anything regarding this matter other than to assume taxpayers want to give the teachers and other union another $785,000 of our money, and that the board would be wrong in this assumption. So at that point, the, we have gone out to the units and tried to seek concessions from them. Again, these are contracts that they already have in place. We can't go and alter these contracts without open negotiations with them. Future contracts, you know, we can take current situation into account much more easily. But as a board, you know, we have to work with the contracts that we have in front of us. So questions to the board? What is the plan for cuts if the budget is voted down? And what is the plan for cuts if the governor takes back more money from the school, as he has said he would do? Dr. Spring, can you talk a little bit about those?
So in the contingency side, Erin, do you want to bring that, that slide back up? So that was, remember, conferences, materials and supplies. Again, prohibiting building use from, by the community. Let's see. Hold on. Yeah, field trips. So, so that is what we would be required to reduce. And that would be $400,000 of, of, again, completely eliminating those items, those line items. And, and what I said before, it really definitely will hinder our efforts in really fighting COVID-19 in our school buildings. And also for our students, because we are able to buy Chromebooks. And under a contingency, again, that would, that would be very limited.
And as far as the 10% reduction, we're, we still are in the initial plans of what that would look like. We haven't identified all the impact that that would have, that 1.67 million. Is that correct?
That is correct. And also, we are waiting to see how drastic the takeback may be. At this point, we don't, we don't know. We're still waiting to see if those federal stimulus funds come through for New York State and come through for local, you know, for school districts.
A few more questions, which were, what is the maximum allowable student-teacher class size ratio? What percentage of Cohoes classes are at the maximum? And why aren't we expecting all classes to be at or near the maximum?
So contractually, the maximum is 30. And we know kids learn best by building really solid and close relationships with, with their teachers. And that becomes more difficult the larger the class sizes. So we definitely, where, where possible, especially at primary levels and, and intermediate levels as, as best we can, we try to keep those class sizes lower. They are larger at the middle school. And the high school is, it depends on what the class may be. But we've eliminated five teachers at the high school. And we will have larger class sizes at the high school. We've eliminated electives. So we tried to look at the data, and we, we've tried to already right-size those class sizes. So I, I think it will be a challenge under COVID-19 and social distancing. We need as many teachers with our students as possible to be able to accommodate social distancing. So I would be very worried to reduce class sizes or increase class sizes any, anymore.
I do personally think that if we continue down virtual learning or digital learning route, that it's a whole different ballgame. And we may be thinking about just completely different workflows and settings of how we're, we're doing things.
Matt, this is Margaret. Can I just jump in really quick? I kind of was going through with you as you're going through these questions. And just remind people that they need to identify themselves and where they live?
Yes, thank you.
There's a couple of questions here that don't have name, address.
Thank you for that. Following up on that, so with some of Dave's questions. And thank you, everyone, for reaching out, Dave, and all of our community who have reached out to us this meeting, previous meetings, to engage in this dialogue and discourse with us. We represent you all, and we really appreciate you taking the time to listen in and engage with us to provide your opinions and feedback as to what we're doing here. So additional questions from Dave Ford. Did you offer any incentives to teachers to take early retirement? Did we get any response from that? You know, if not, what was the reason? And how many teachers are we expecting to retire next year? So I can start at least a little bit with that. We, the information that, that we were getting was that there wasn't likely to be a lot of retirements this, from staff this year. And our current agreement does offer an incentive if unit members take, retire the first year that they are eligible. So we had looked at perhaps offering that, but it just didn't seem to make sense from the financial look at it. I'm not sure about next year, though.
So, so Matt, again, the purpose of an incentive is to obviously realize savings, right? By, through those retirements. So we did go back to our unit, our teachers' association in, before COVID-19. And we did present a more robust incentive. We did discuss it. And there weren't any teachers who were interested in taking advantage of that. I think they were set on retiring next year, and, and that's what they're waiting for. But, but we did offer that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure how many will retire next year. How many are eligible? I don't know if Stacy knows that.
So we had three take action for the upcoming, for the 2021 budget. And I do believe it's close to 10 that would be eligible next year.
Thank you, Stacy. A follow-up question is from Jim Singler, who lives with his wife on Admiral's Walk. And they're new to the district, and they would like to know how many board members have children currently attending school in the district. I currently do not. I do not have kids in the district.
So this is Rick. I have three currently in elementary school and one has a one-year-old who will be attending in a few years.
This is Helen. I have one that's going into middle school next year.
This is Margaret. I have no children currently in the school district, but have four that have gone through from kindergarten to 12th grade.
This is Sue. I have two grandchildren in the school district.
This is Nadia. Sorry, Mark. I did it again.
Go ahead, Nadia. Go ahead.
My two children have gone through. They're graduated. They did K-12 and left a couple of years ago.
My, my, my kids are not kids any longer, but had the best experiences in Cohoes schools.
And then just a follow- And then just a follow-up question. How many board members have family that are employed by the district? I do not have family that are employed by the district.
I don't have any family within 100 miles of here.
My daughter teaches Spanish at the middle school and she went through the district K through 12.
My sister is a fifth-grade teacher and my sister-in-law is an aide in the district.
I do not. If I did, I would be proud of that, but I do not.
This is Helen. I don't either, but I have lots of friends that are employed in the district that I like to think of as family, so.
I guess I should also say I have a niece who teaches math at the high school and she's doing her administrative internship, which she'll be finishing in December.
Sue also taught in the district, just so.
For a lot of years, yes.
Couple of years, couple of years.
Just a couple.
Just to be clear, I have other extended family members that do work in the district. I'm sorry. So that was my immediate family.
Okay. And then related to that, just that we only had two people running for our two seats. And if it was too late to put in a petition to run for school board, which at this point, we have passed that deadline for this year, although we encourage folks to be involved in any way possible, whether it's with your local school or next year. If you're interested, continue to attend our board meetings and, you know, see how things work here. And if you're interested, definitely try and get on the ballot for next year. All right. As you mentioned, there were a couple that didn't have names, but I've been taking those questions when they seem appropriate. So our next question is, what monies are being included in the budget for additional cleaning costs and other costs we're sure to have as a result of the coronavirus? Assuming in-school classes start in the fall, what supplies will the district have to provide for students and staff? And what monies are allocated for this cost? Has the district included additional monies for substitute teachers for when teachers are out sick? Who will be responsible for cleaning the classrooms throughout the day and while this result in additional costs?
So we are participating in a cooperative bid and purchase of COVID-19 supplies. And so that's one thing. We're also participating in using our FEMA monies to be able to purchase supplies to ensure, you know, high levels and standards of cleanliness in our buildings. And I'll turn it over to Stacy. She can talk more specifically about exactly what we're purchasing.
Yeah, so we are participating in a BOC's consortium purchase of PPE equipment. And that includes masks for our staff and our students. It includes wipes to wipe down the computer keyboards and other disinfectant chemicals. Also, we've already applied for the FEMA. And that's 75% of the cost will be covered. So we've already changed the air filters in all of the buildings. So that's something that we will ask to be included. If we do incur overtime to prepare in September, that would be covered. And then I'm working with our director of facilities on hand sanitizers, disinfectants. And again, that'll have to go through MWE process. So we're just starting that process. So I don't have a total figure for that. But part of the question was how much was allocated in the budget for cleaning supplies? And that line item is $65,000. Okay?
Thank you. A comment from Carrie Dame. Good evening. I'm writing to say how much I have appreciated Kayla Cole and her compassion for helping me and my children. The Koho School was a big adjustment for my children when they started school there a couple of years ago. Since starting school in 2016, I have had one graduate and another graduating this year. I have a son with some disabilities and it has been hard for me and him. But having Kayla to call and give advice or assist with referrals or recourses that could be of help to him has been wonderful. I also have a son in second grade and we are currently considered homeless. I've had the hardest couple of years of my life and it has not been easy on my kids or myself. To know if I need something or just to talk, Kayla has always returned my emails or calls promptly without hesitation. I don't know how I would have gotten through the last couple of years without her. I cannot believe there is only one of her for such a big school. She is needed and there should actually be more help for families in similar situations. I just wanted to say something about her and her willingness to help even when the help I needed seemed impossible. She assisted without complaint. I appreciate her and wanted to let you know she is needed. And I'm sure there are many other families who feel the same.
I just wanted to say that our homelessness liaison 0.5 position will continue. So we will still be able to provide that level of support to our homeless family.
And I know it was already discussed, but all of the impacts here are, you know, heart-wrenching, difficult choices. None of them yield positively on our children. So those are all just unfortunate choices. Another question from Dave Belaski, which was what community use of facilities would be impacted if the budget is defeated? Do we charge groups to use our facilities? Wouldn't that, excuse me, wouldn't that be lost revenue?
Stacy, do you want to take that one?
We do charge for use of facilities for outside groups. We do not charge for city partnerships or PTO, PTA use. We do not charge for not for profit unless we incur any overtime. So really, it would be for any use where the school district is incurring additional costs. It could be PTA activities, could be city activities, depends on the circumstances. But anything that basically is happening on the weekends because we don't have coverage of custodial or cleaners on the weekends. And so that would be overtime. There could be a whole myriad of events that would fall under that umbrella.
Thank you. There was a question from a community member about what, explaining the process for making donations to the district?
So if anybody would like to make a donation to the district, they could make the check payable to Koho City School District. They could send it to 21 Page Avenue here in Koho's and attention district treasurer. And then the board will take action to approve the donation. And then once the board approves the donation, then we would deposit it. And if you have a specific use that you would like to donate towards, for example, the music program, then you would just make note of that in the memo on the check. And then we would make sure that it is allocated to that particular line item. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy. Dave Belaski wanted to thank the board and everyone for taking his questions and responding fully. He agrees with the board that this is a difficult decision and that he will be voting for the school budget and counting on all Koho's community members to vote in favor of the budget as well. Dawn Drew would like to state that she's in support of the teachers in our district. Not going to say that she's knowledgeable about the ins and outs of the budget, but as a fellow civil servant balancing the budget on the backs of our teachers, she's not in support of. Since she has two children in the district, she'll gladly pay the extra $60 in taxes to ensure that they receive a valuable education. And lastly here, a few comments from Lynette McGovern. And she states that this time is extremely difficult, not only for the city of Koho's school district, but for all school districts. As a teacher for over 20 years in the Albany School District and a resident of Koho's, for the last 14 years, it is very hard to hear that there is some disappointment amongst the community about the teachers and their salaries. As Mr. Nolan said, there are contracts for this very reason. Teachers should not be expected to always have to take a freeze whenever there is a monetary issue. That is only a temporary fix and the next year, these same issues will be on the table. Money management needs to take precedence, not expecting a union to take a freeze. The teachers work countless hours to help educate, love, support and care for all of our students. She supports the teachers in the city of Koho's and absolutely admires all of their energy and outreach, especially during this remote learning period. Bravo to them for taking this on without any hesitation. Oh, and I did just get another comment, a last one, which is actually a good one. From Megan Cherabino. Don't forget to fill out the census so that Koho's can get any extra money or funding that we get based on residency and numbers, which is a very good point to bring up. Okay. Having gone through that, at this point, I could use a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mrs. Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey? And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Are there any questions from the board on any topic at all?
I just have a request.
Go ahead, Mark.
This is my annual request. It serves no purpose other than event. I would ask everyone in attendance, everyone on the board, the next time you see any elected official at any level, to ask them why it is that it's only school budgets that are voted upon. I would love to be able to go into a ballot and vote on my federal budget, my state budget, my county budget, my city budget, but no, it is only the education of our children that can appear on a budget for a vote. So you can only vote down education and nothing else. Me saying that means probably nothing, but I need to say it every year.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, this is Margaret. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to congratulate Laura Tarlo for her appointment. We're really excited to be working with her as principal. And thank you to Brian for everything that you've done for the high school since you've been there. Congratulations to Laura, or Helen Tarlo on her retirement. Pretty much anybody that has gone through this school district knows Mrs. Tarlo and she was the face that they would see every single day. She spent countless hours counseling kids and talking to kids and, you know, just being there for them. So we appreciate all of your years of service, Helen, and we will miss you.
Thank you, Margaret. On the topic of Laura, I was part of the interview committee and just, you know, glowing recommendation from the committee for her to take on the role. Everyone was beyond thrilled, so I'm very excited. I did just want to wrap up. And if there were no other questions from folks, just to say, you know, there are no victories, no wins, no good decisions really here, only decisions that had to be made. I want to thank everyone, my fellow board members, administration, all of our staff for helping us through this situation. At this point, every budget decision comes with a list of ways in which it hurts our students. And over the last decade of my time here on the board, I feel like we've gained a lot of ground. It's beyond painful to make these cuts because we all know they impact our students and people's lives. So unfortunately, I believe this mail is only the start of the journey that we're going to be on. But I hope that we will, you know, I know that we will continue as a board to reach out to all of you. And I hope you'll continue to work with us to help us minimize the negative impact the best we can. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you as well.
With that, if there's no other comment, I could use a motion to adjourn at 7:14.
Could I, may I just say one thing, Matt?
Of course.
I just want to thank Helen for her service. I know she isn't quite done yet, but in case we forget this. And to welcome Pete, it's kind of a family deal, family package. But I've really enjoyed working with her this year. So I just wanted to thank her so much for her service and to welcome Pete aboard eventually.
If I could, I would like to thank Matt for his great work as our school board president and his willingness to take a pay freeze as part of the budget deal.
You can count on me, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue. And I just want to let you all know that I think that you're all amazing and brilliant and in this for the right reason. And I respect all of you and I'm going to miss you all very much. I have a few more meetings, though, a few more.
But I wanted to make sure we covered that.
Thank you.
With that, just need a motion to adjourn the meeting here.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I think you're still muted.
Sorry. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mrs. Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you again to everyone and especially everyone in the community listening and participating in our discussions. Thank you and have a great night.